Downtown Austin Community. Good morning, it's starting with South Central. And let's see how far we get. Hard stop at 5:00. Austin Energy staff, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the council. Ed Vanino, Chief Financial Officer. This next briefing for you is an update on our Colony Park and South Central waterfront plans. As you are well aware, these are exciting projects with long histories, including numerous prior staff memorandums, presentations to council, and prior council actions. Today's briefing reflects a continued strong partnership between the Housing and Planning Department, Economic Development Department, and the Financial Services Department related to both the South Central Waterfront and the Colony Park Vision Plans. The presentation today is responsive to two council resolutions that were passed just last month. And if we go to the next slide, I'll just quickly summarize the direction we received. The first resolution directed staff to come back to council this year with a preliminary project plan and financing plan for the creation of a South Central Waterfront TERS. They also told us to look at different options for where we, how we set the tax participation level and to design the TERS to recapture some portion of the but-for incremental value associated with the construction of public improvements. And we'll have more on that but-for incremental value as we get into the presentation. Also, direction to collaborate with the Austin Economic Development Corporation, which I'm happy to say we have been doing. We've had several meetings with them on this TERS discussion. And then lastly, the resolution spoke to providing council with a plan and schedule for creating a Colony Park TERS next calendar year. The second resolution, if we went on to the next slide, was similar, but maybe a little bit more broad, spoke about providing council an update on a tax increment reinvestment zone or a TERS or other financial mechanisms to pay for public improvements and amenities in the South Central Waterfront Plan, to provide a plan for achieving that financial mechanism by the end of the calendar year, also to provide an update on the status of the regulatory plan for the South Central Waterfront area. And then reiterated the direction from the prior resolution to come up with a plan for doing a Colony Park TERS during calendar year 2022. Today's presentation checks the box on much of this council direction. The financing portion of the presentation will focus primarily on the potential creation of a TERS for the South Central area. I do want to say upfront that even with tax increment financing, staff projects that there would be a substantial funding gap for the needed public improvements, meaning that additional work will still need to be done to identify other funding mechanisms to pay for the South Central Waterfront public improvements or to reduce the scope of the project. And that's work that council staff will continue to do, looking to respond to the direction to come back with a full financial mechanism by the end of this calendar year. So I'm going to turn it over now. I believe Veronica Brizanios is online to walk us through the agenda for the day and to cover the updates for Colony Park and the South Central Waterfront area.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Veronica Brizanios, the Economic Development Director. So today, we're going to walk through a series of slides with you. We'll start with an update on Colony Park, following an update on South Central Waterfront Plan Overview, as well as the physical framework and cost estimates. Then we'll turn it over to Kimberly Olivares to talk about the financing components of it, the public infrastructure financing options, the potential TIF, the South Central Waterfront Market and TIF Debt Analysis, and the Preliminary TERS Financing Plan. Then we will have Rosie Trulove, our Housing and Planning Director, walk us through affordable housing options, as well as the regulating plan updates. And then Ed will close us out with next steps. Next slide, please. So, starting off with Colony Park. Go to the next slide. So, as an update or a reminder, the Colony Park Sustainable Community Public Finance Strategy includes a very important project to us and the Economic Development Department and the city as a whole, including multiple departments. A project overview of this project, it's 208 acres of city-owned land in northeast Austin, mixed use and mixed income residential and commercial development. It includes over 10 years of community stakeholder support. And the proposed green line, as well as purple line alignment, are in this neighborhood, in this community. The approved master plan and planned unit development, which was approved in December of 2014, includes 20% affordable workforce housing, approximately 50 acres of parks, open space, and trails, and the Austin Energy Green Building Program-rated buildings. Some of the key dates and milestones that have been important to this project include in May 2020, when the executed exclusive negotiation agreement with Cattellus Development occurred. In September 2021, we authorized the purchase and sale agreement with Central Health for 2.3 acres for a health and wellness center. As you are aware, there is a health desert in this community. We also authorized infrastructure development agreement with Cattellus for central health, public street, and utility infrastructure construction. The estimated infrastructure financing gap is at $125 million. Next slide. So, in regards to the recommendations regarding financing, the Cattellus Project Development Financing Gap Recommendations, as of May of 2021, are to increase density through the PUD Amendment, lower infrastructure costs, leverage city participation with CIP Value Capture Mechanism, approximately $25 million of public infrastructure reductions and recommended PUD Amendment. The Public Finance Strategy Draft includes approximately $25 million from a tax increment reinvestment zone, or TERS, approximately $15 million from a public improvement district, and this is pending legal review, and approximately $60 million in capital improvement project funding currently unidentified. Some of the economic and community benefits include approximately $540 million in property value, approximately $3.5 million in annual property tax and sales tax revenue, approximately 2,900 construction jobs and 1,200 permanent jobs. The health and wellness center development with Central Health that I mentioned on the previous slide, and Austin Public Health and Austin Public Library co-located with Central Health, as well as retail development. The overall recommendation for financing will come to council in the first quarter of 2022. And I mentioned on the front end that this is the work of multiple departments, and you see in these two slides how many of our sister departments have come to the table to help us with this project, and we're appreciative of their support. Next slide. So, switching over to South Central Waterfronts, I mentioned I will discuss and overview of the vision plan and a little bit of the history, and then I'll turn it over to Kimberly Olivares. So, Plan Overview. The South Central Waterfront Vision Plan establishes conceptual framework to allow site-specific building enhancements in exchange for onsite and citywide community benefits. It lays out a set of tools to guide area redevelopment for the next 20 years. It includes 97 acres in the district, 118 acres with right-of-way, 34 privately-owned properties, and one city-owned property, One Texas Center. It also includes the proposed blue line alignment and orange line alignment with an underground stop and a one-stop with the blue line alignment. And some of the history of the waterfront planning, the history does date quite a bit back, starting in the 1960s and the 70s with the creation of Lady Bird Lake, formerly Town Lake. In the 1980s, there was a Town Lake Corridor Study and Waterfront Overlay Combining District. From 2012 to 2013, Sustainable Places Design Assessment. From 2014 to 2016, 19 public events and three council briefings were held, which resulted in the interim South Central Waterfront Plan. In 2016, EPA's screening of South Central Waterfront Report outlines the vision. In 2016, City Council adopted the South Central Waterfront Vision Framework Plan as an amendment to Imagine Austin. And in 2020, staff is updating the South Central Waterfront Physical Framework, Project Cost, and Financial Calculator. So, the 2016 adopted vision framework includes approximately 17 acres of parks, plazas, open spaces, and trails, 1.5 miles of refurbished new multimodal streets, 6.4 million square feet of new construction, approximately 2,800 new residential units with a goal of 20% to be affordable at 60% to 80% median family income for rentals, and 80% to 120% median MFI for ownership units. We wanted to highlight some of the critical implementation steps in the chart to the right. The regulating plan outlining opt-in zoning regulations is underway. The public financing tools, such as the TIF and the PID, are underway. The creation of the Economic Development Entity to oversee implementation was completed in 2020 by the creation of the Austin Economic Development Corporation. And as Ed mentioned in his introduction, we are working very closely with the AEDC in discussing this plan, and as we're making progress, looking at the AEDC's role in this important project. The creation of the South Central Waterfront Advisory Board was completed in 2017. Leveraging city-owned property at One Texas Center to help meet the affordable housing and create new city office space, this is underway. And then identify a lead city department to coordinate South Central Waterfront Implementation. This also was completed. Economic Development was named the lead department, which became effective October 21, 2021. The Modified Physical Framework Cost Estimates. So, I should preface this, but this is an estimate. This is the result of work with a consultant that worked with multiple departments in 2020 to estimate these amounts, and staff has been working diligently to update the amounts, but it is an estimate at this point. The estimates do not include funds needed to meet affordable housing goal or operation and maintenance of amenities. Cost estimates are currently under review, as I'd mentioned. So, the overall estimate is at $277 million with open spaces at 93.7, roadway and drainage at 83.4, streetscapes at 56.3, utilities at 35.7, green infrastructure at 5.5, and reclaimed water at 2.4. Next slide. And now I'll turn it over to Kimberly Olivares to walk through the public infrastructure financing options.
Good afternoon, Council. Kim Olivares, Deputy CFO. Before we jump into the specifics of a tax increment financing setup, I wanted to provide an overview of the various financing tools that are available to us overall to support this project. First, there are existing department capital improvement program appropriations. That could include a mix of voter, current revenue-funded appropriation, as well as voter-approved bonds. There's also the Housing Trust Fund. We can also be looking at the possibility of a new voter-approved bond program in the near future. We might also look at economic incentive agreements, public-private partnerships, a public improvement district. But with a public improvement district, it's important to note that parcel owner support is a legal requirement. Similarly, with the municipal management district, not only includes a requirement for parcel owner support, it actually requires state legislation to establish it. And then finally, last but not least, the tax increment reinvestment zone, which would ultimately result in a tax increment financing plan. Next slide. So, tax increment financing is a tool that state law provides us to spur economic growth in an area in which development or redevelopment is unlikely to occur without that public investment. It is not a new tax. Instead, it's dedication of property tax revenue from a very specific geographic area to pay for improvements in that zone. In Texas, only a city or a county can create a TERS. Upon creation, you establish the baseline value of property within the zone. It freezes that, and then some or all of the tax revenue from future growth in property value within that zone, which is basically the tax increment, is collected and then dedicated to fund the cost of the various investments that are anticipated to spur that growth. Next slide. This is a graphic, or an image that we use pretty regularly to help illustrate all of the words I just said on the previous slide. You'll note in the light blue color, that is where is the baseline taxable value. That pink section is what you, what kind of growth you would anticipate to see in a zone, regardless of any sort of investment, because growth does occur regularly throughout the city. But with that public investment, you anticipate a greater degree of growth, and that is what is demonstrated in the yellow section, essentially the but-for aspect, or but-for value capture for a TERS. Now, a TERS does have an end date when it's established. When that end date is reached, then all the taxable value and the revenue collected against that value returns back to the general fund. Next slide. There are a variety of statutory requirements when it comes to a TIF. First and foremost, you have to establish a very clear and significant but-for criterion related to that development or redevelopment. But for that public investment, that development or redevelopment would not occur through private investment in the area. Some of the criterion includes, but it's certainly not limited to, the present condition of the zone is substantially impairs growth, there are substandard or deteriorating infrastructure or structures, there's inadequate sidewalks or street layout, or possibly unsanitary, unsafe conditions, or conditions that actually might endanger life or property. When, once you have paid all of the project costs or any debt associated with that TERS, that is when the TERS is retired and the term ends, and then, like I said previously, that property tax revenue would return to the city for general purposes. Next slide. In addition to the statutory requirements, council adopted through FY '20 budget a financial policy related to tax increment financing. Some of the major provisions include that there must be participation by the private sector and/or other tax entities in that project and financing plan. The city must conduct a rigorous but-for analysis to demonstrate that the zone is absolutely necessary. Particularly important also that any housing develop, that development that is part of the TIF must provide for at least 20% of the units to be affordable to households at or below 60% MFI for rental, or 80% MFI for ownership. And then finally, bonds issued to fund these, the TIF development are going to be subject to various coverage tests, debt service reserve requirements, and they must mature on or before the termination date of the zone. So, for example, if the zone expires, the life of your debt must be 20 years. Next slide. There are a number of steps required before you can establish a TERS. First, we need to prepare a preliminary financing plan. We then need to publish a public hearing notice in the newspaper. Once you've held that hearing, staff must also provide a series of information, including what the boundaries of the zone would be, the amount of bonds intended to be issued, percentage of tax increment that would be contributed by the city or any other participating taxing entity, as well as estimated project cost. Council would then vote on that reinvestment zone ordinance and then establish a board of directors. Based on the direction we've received and what we, the plan we've been working on, we could potentially bring that back, all of those steps back to you on December 9. Next slide. Once that zone has been established, then there are a number of additional steps. First, the Zone's Board of Directors must prepare that project and financing plan that would then be voted on by the board and then sent to City Council for its review and a vote. It must also establish the increment dedication by other taxing units within the zone, if applicable. Right now, the only other zone that has another participating taxing entity is the Walla Creek TIF. For the original portion of it, the county does participate. The Zone's Board of Directors must make recommendations to council on implementing the TIF, and then the council would then provide the board the powers to exercise by ordinance. And then finally, we must submit an annual report within 150 days of fiscal year-end to the CEO of each taxing unit, as well as the state comptroller that provides a variety of information that I will not read off to you. Next slide. So, in preparation of a possible TERS for the South Central Waterfront, we did contract with a consultant to conduct a market analysis of the area. His analysis did come back saying that it does support the feasibility of the South Central Waterfront Framework with the development over the 20-year period. You can see that he notes that the anticipated base year value would be approximately 825 million. Growth over the 20 years would be just under $3 billion, not related to TERS investments. And then just over $4 billion in value over the 20 years would be, but related to the but-for value. When, in addition to the value projections that the consultant provided, he also provided a number of comments and commentary on various conditions of both office market and the residential market regarding rental, average rental rates, tenant mixes, the occupancy and rental rates for both apartment and multifamily, as well as for attached housing, what kind of sales rates you're seeing. So, we're able to look pretty in-depth at what absorption capabilities the zone has based on those different, the development types. Next slide. Now that we have those, that value projection and that market analysis, we can conduct the TIF analysis. So, within the TERS district boundary, we would, we look at the boundary less new construction that has recently been completed. We also, this, by doing this, by removing that most recently completed construction, it actually strengthens our but-for argument, because clearly that development occurred without our investment and would not meet that but-for. That strong but-for criteria, as I've noted in previous slides, is not only required by state law, but our council financial policy. But if we do issue bonds for part of the public investment, we do have to go to the Attorney General for approval of those bonds. The review from the Attorney General has gotten more intense in recent years, so we need to be able to demonstrate that but-for aspect very easily. For the recapture percent, we would exclude the Austin Transit Partnership portion of our tax rate, which is approximately 20% of the O&amp;M rate. We would also recommend limiting the city portion of the tax rate only to the, to only the additional increment that would have, would not have occurred but for the public investment. And that equates to about approximately 50%, 55% of projected revenue growth, not the tax growth, but the revenue, or not the value growth, but the revenue growth. And then we also are currently looking at what options we have on whether we can exclude the debt portion of the tax rate in those dollar amounts. Based on this analysis, the bonding capacity for the TERS over the 20 years is subject to just under $154 million in revenue capture. That results in a debt capacity of approximately $95.5 million. But as new construction occurs in those initial years, what kind, the revenue that is created in the TERS would come nowhere close to what we would need to be making in terms of debt service payments. So, we would need to be looking at what options we have to basically backstop, or if we can phase issuances, what our different options would be to minimize that impact. But even with minimizing that impact, we do need to address the fact that there is a funding gap. Next slide. For the, a recommendation really to what public infrastructure to fund through the TIF, with $95.5 million in debt capacity, that clearly does not equate to $277 million of the estimated cost for those, the infrastructure. So, it is not sufficient to fund it all. So, we would recommend identifying subsets of projects within the financing plan. We're exploring a tiered concept, based on feedback we've received from advisors that we have on contract for TIFs and PIDs. They have noted that you can create tiers based on a category of projects, for example, streets or drainage, but you can also make a tier based on a geographic area. So, for example, within the South Central Waterfront area, there is an area called the Waterfront Downtown Gateway, so we could focus our investments in a certain area. Between now and when we'd come back to council in December, staff will be collaborating on what tiers it would recommend to include in that project and financing plan. And with that, I'll pass it over to Rosie Trulove to speak to the affordable housing options.
Can I get the next slide, please? Hello, Rosie Trulove, Director of the Housing and Planning Department. The South Central Waterfront Plan calls for 20% affordable housing overall within the district. We did envision this as a district-wide goal and recognize that some parcels could come in with housing, but with affordable housing at less than 20%. The City Council TIF Policy states that any housing development that is part of a TIF project plan must provide for at least 20% of the units to be affordable to households earning at or below 60% of median family income for rental housing, and 80% of the median family income for ownership housing for at least the duration of the TIF project plan. The estimated cost of meeting 20% affordability within the district far exceeds the available TERS revenue. This is going to require other forms of gap financing and formation of a capital stack. It's going to require development support or modification to the goals and policies. Next slide, please. We are also working proactively on the regulating plan. As you know, the regulating plan will control the physical build-out. It lays out the public benefits and developer incentives. These developer incentives include potential additional density in return for provision of community benefits. It includes requirements for affordable housing provided by private developments that utilize bonus entitlements, as well as streets, blocks, open space, streetscape, drainage and building placement, building height, land uses, parking and transportation, and impervious cover. The regulating plan is optional. Properties can always redevelop using existing zoning, but if they want the additional entitlements, they would have to opt into the regulating plan. And the regulating plan could be expanded to include additional parcels and/or allow greater entitlements to help support community benefits. Can I get the next slide, please? This is a chart that shows where we're at in the formation and creation of the regulating plan, updating what we have previously worked on under the previous Land Development Code, and then code next, and Land Development Code rewrite, so we're refreshing the information and running it back through the various boards and commissions in coordination with the South Central Waterfront Advisory Board. We do anticipate bringing it through for council consideration in early summer of 2022. I'm now turning it back to Ed.
Thank you, Rosie. We can go to the last slide, which is just next steps. And I just want to thank everybody that was able to pull this together in very short order. These resolutions were passed on October 21, and staff had our first meeting to discuss this on, this presentation on October 22. You heard from four of us today, but as always, for every person you heard from, there's five people behind the scenes that were really pulling all the numbers together and to make this work in very short order. So, appreciate all of them, and thank you for their time and effort to this. In regards to next steps, we have the remainder of November to work out all those details of a project financing plan that Kim spoke of. That's one of the requirements of creating a TERS, and that plan needs to include zone boundaries, financing costs, estimated project costs, percentage of tax increment that'll be contributed. And so, we'll be working on that through the remainder of this month. And we also have consultants that we're working with to help guide us on that. In December, if council wishes to create a TERS, we will need to conduct a public hearing in advance of council taking action to establish a TERS. We would envision that happening on December 9. The public hearing needs to be noticed a week in advance of that, so the public hearing notice would have to go out on November 2. We would then be working between now and the end of the calendar year to explore other financing mechanisms, that list of things that Kim spoke to, public improvement districts, voter-approved bonds. A TERS is projected to pay for about a third of the public infrastructure needs, not counting affordable housing. So, clearly, there's a substantial need for additional financing to make the South Central Waterfront Vision Plan come to a reality and to fund all those public improvements. A lot of those things, we're not going to be able to get done by the end of December, but I do think we could come up with a plan and a timeline for when those things could potentially occur. And then we'll also be working throughout 2022 to develop our final project plan and financing plan, and to convene the Board of Directors for approval, basically the next steps in creating a TERS. And then we'll be doing that similar work. And then we'll be doing that similar work for Colony Park, leading to an action by council, consideration of a TERS for Colony Park in 2022. So that completes our staff briefing. Any of us are available to you for your questions.
First, I want to say that I, that I appreciate the, the amount of work that was done in, in a relatively short period of time. There's a lot of work in here, and I just want to say I appreciate that, and I recognize, I recognize that. When you set up a TERS like this, and if we set it up by the end of the year, then we would be locking in that value from which we could take a percentage if we chose to at some point in the future. There are certain plans that you have to present now in order to be able to create that this year. My question is, next year, as we get greater information, better, maybe better cost information, or we see that we're going to move forward with a bond and don't need to, to raise as much? So long as we haven't actually committed any bonds based on revenue stream projections, can we change the, amend or update the, the plan details, or the percentage, or the costs, or any of those things as we get further information next year, without losing the advantage of having locked in the, the value this year?
Yes, you can amend the, you can amend the project plan.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for this work, and I think it would be good to get it on the agenda, sending out the notices and getting it back. You know, my colleagues, I'm just concerned that if we don't figure out how to improve the infrastructure in that area, we're going to have properties that start developing with the existing infrastructure, the existing absence of a city grid. And once that starts happening, it's going to be near impossible, if not impossible, for us to, to actually get it to develop the way we want it to develop. But to do that, that requires the infrastructure, and we're going to have to solve that problem. By taking the action this year, it doesn't commit us to anything. It just keeps that door open for us, that we can then talk about levels and details and, at some point in the future. But it, but it locks in that, that value, gives us greater flexibility. Further, Kathy, and then Vanessa.
Yeah, thank, thanks very much. I'm just going to add my very quick thanks for all the information. I've got lots of questions about the financing options and some other, and some other elements. I'm going to have to switch to phone, unfortunately, but I do want to just zero in on some of the questions regarding the regulating plan. So we had, it was my understanding that we were making really good progress on developing, really, the code elements that were going to codify that vision plan, and that it got delayed so that it, you know, there was a question several years ago whether it should move forward, or whether it should wait, given that we were about to start the LDC conversations. Then, you know, it, we had that question come up again multiple times, so I'm... Director Trulove, I may have missed this because I had to run up and was listening to you by phone, but it looks as if the plan drafting started in August of this year, yet we've had consultants who have been hired to do this work in past budget cycles, so, and we had one staff member who was really focused on this issue for quite a while. So is, am I... Again, it was my understanding that several times, we've had the question about whether that work should advance or wait for the LDC, so I thought a good body of that work was already completed. Am I incorrect in that?
So my understanding from, from working with staff is that while the work was in, in good shape before, that it did have to be refreshed, so to speak, and that's what we've been working with, including working with the consultants that we had on board before. We have lost both of the staff members that were working on the South Central Plan, one to retirement and one to shifting over to the Project Connect Office, and so we are introducing new staff into the space, and so they don't have the knowledge of the, of the pre-existing work. So that's, that's what I have to offer on that right now. I'm, I'm more than happy to chat with you and your staff in more detail about that, but it did take, it is taking a little bit of time to refresh the work. We had framed it for incorporation into the Land Development, the Land Development Code Rewrite, and so now we're having to revert it back to the existing Land Development Code, and that is taking a, a small bit of time.
I guess it would be very helpful to know who, who, who are the staff members who are now tasked with this, because I, I really believed that that work was, you know, sort of complete and ready to go before, before it was adapted to work within the LDC framework, and now if we're reverting back, I would think that body of work exists too. So that was really one of the reasons why I think it is, it was in my resolution that you co-sponsored, Mayor, but it didn't necessarily appear in that, but just because we, we really need to get some clarity on what happened to all that work that had been done, that we funded, that we had consultants working on. If I could, I would like to better understand what it means to refresh it, whether we, whether we can't just go back to that earlier body, but if, if I had some real concrete examples, that would help too. You know, this is just, as you know, as I said, when we passed the resolution, just really critical, because we know we have one major project going through this, the cycle. We've known this is on the horizon for a long while. We've highlighted, Manager, for you, the importance of getting that regulating plan completed, so that it is, it happens in advance of those, of at least that one big project. Now there's another in the cycle. You know, at the point we get the regul, I'm concerned that at the point we get the regulating plan, the major tracks will, will already be too far along in the process for it to, to have much of an impact. So could we, thank you, Director Trulove, for the offer to provide that information to my staff. I think that's important, but I would say that's probably something the entire dais is interested in, and so if we could please get a follow-up on what, what currently exists, how it was altered over the last several years, what some of the funding was that we put forward for consultants, and kind of where that work, where that work is at this point.
We will certainly get that update. I, I can tell you that that work is, is happening in our planning group under the leadership of Stevie Greathouse, but we will get some information back to the full council on that.
Thanks very much. And, you know, and again, if you had some ability to get that back to, at least an initial answer back about what already exists, that would be really helpful.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. How many TERS areas do we have in Austin?
I believe the answer is four. We have Mueller, Walla Creek, Seehome, and then there's a Second Street TERS, which is not a traditional TERS, it's a $100,000 fixed allocation to maintenance of our Second Street around City Hall.
Okay, so what it, how like, what's a typical average timeline for, to get one up and running?
Yeah, I think we could typically do the work in about six months to do the analysis and to do the work to create a TERS. Depends how much background information has already been done, so this direction to get a TERS done this year on the timeline asked for is only possible because there's so much work that had already been done on, on the project. But we need to do a market analysis, we need to do a financing plan, and I would say six months is probably the shortest that could be done from scratch.
Gotcha. Well, thank you, and thank you for this presentation. It was super helpful as you all walked through the different mechanisms and, and the steps needed to get one set up, to get a TERS set up. And the last question I have regarding the affordability requirement, in order to meet the 20% affordability, I'll share that the amount with the TERS would not be enough, would not be sufficient to cover meeting the affordability requirement. So how, what other revenue would we take a look at in order to meet this requirement? Would it be through our Project Connect anti-displacement funds? Would it be through, I mean, if we have any affordable housing fund, funds left over?
It would be existing or, or future affordable housing bonds, Housing Trust Fund, or the anti-displacement funds. Maybe Rosie has other great ideas.
Yeah. I, I would say, I'm not sure that the anti-displacement dollars would be a good fit for this particular area, but we would have to look at the proximity to transit and, and how all that would come together. Typically, we'd be looking at affordable housing bonds at Housing Trust Fund. As Ed said, there's perhaps a chance of federal dollars that would align, but typically, affordable housing of this nature will come into play with, through utilization of our rental housing development assistance dollars, which is our general obligation bonds.
Gotcha. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else to this presentation? Councilmember Alther?
Can you explain what ADAC's current role is in this process?
Well, we've had, Anne Gatling Hayes is the Chief Transaction Officer there. We have had her at our staff meetings as we've been preparing this presentation, so we've been having conversations with her as, and of course, Veronica is the current acting C, CEO for the AEDC. So they have been part of the conversations of creating a TERS. I don't know, Veronica, if you have any more to add in regards to what the longer-term vision is for AEDC's role in the overall South Central Waterfront framework, but in, just in terms of creating the TERS, we have been including AEDC in the conversation of, of how we would create it and, and getting good input from Anne Gatling Hayes.
And does the, does the regulating plan have to be done in order to move forward with the TERS?
No.
Okay. So it, is it, in your mind, feasible to be able to come back to us with something on December 9th, given all the prior work, if it was set, say, at zero as the mayor had suggested?
Yes, I, I think we can come back on December 9th with a, with the preliminary financing plan and creating a TERS for the South Central Waterfront area. We can get the work done by then, and really, we have to have it done by the 2nd to, to do the public hearing notice.
Okay. I just want to say, I think it's really important that we capture the value of where we are now. Been hearing lots of rumblings about proposals that are in the works and roaring to go forward come hell or high water, and, and without regard for the planning that has been going on for many years. So I think it's, it is important for us to get this baseline moving forward if it, if it seems feasible as you've just described. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else before we go to the next report? Then let's go ahead and, and do that. Ed, thank you.
My apologies, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is Kathy.
Hey, Kathy.
Hi, sorry, no, I'm, I'm on audio, but I did want to also just add my voice, I didn't discuss the financing piece of it, and I, I concur that that's a real high priority. I'd like to see us move forward on that before the end of the year, so thanks for the work, thanks for the work in getting that moving.
All right, I think we're set. Thanks, guys. Manager, we, we may have time to do the last report here before 5:00. Let's go ahead and do that.
By the way, before we do that, just to mention, we were in executive session earlier where we were talking about the clerk. We're talking about the city clerk. The city clerk is a different position than the county clerk. We've just learned that the county clerk is retiring a year early, but I understand she may stay on long enough to help with an election in January, should we set one, which I appreciate. But our discussions are with respect to the city clerk. It's a different position, real important position, that, that runs a lot of the clerk capacity that we have in, in the city. Just want to make that clear. But let's go on and do the next presentation.